Okay, well, let's move on to our first agenda item, which is for Lone Fur Memorial Design. I'm excited to be with you during the tail end of AAPI Heritage Month and to introduce our next agenda item, the memorial project at Block 14 of Lone Fur Cemetery. This project is deeply important and for me personally, I was actually in Taipei, Taiwan last week at the funeral of my grandmother and got to experience many of the same ceremonies that happened at Block 14. So just really thrilled that we've been able to create this process memorial and to have community members provide feedback into the final design. So today we have several community members joining us today and we are thankful for their efforts to elevate the council's awareness of this project. We also want to recognize the contribution of those who came before, including past and current Lone Fur Cemetery Foundation members, members of the Oregon Chinese Consolidated Benevolent Association and former governor and Metro Councillor Barbara Roberts. This project wouldn't be where it is today without their tireless energy, passion, and dedication. For the past 18 months, I have participated in several of the community engagement events and listened to community members' aspirations for this project and their reflections on the process. I want to thank Metro staff and the design team for creating an inclusive process that resulted in people feeling heard and reflected in the design. So I am very personally excited for the council to see the latest designs today, which reflect the direction provided by that robust engagement process and has been well received by community. Although we are hearing this item at a work session, I'd like to emphasize that the designs before us today were informed by community voices and have been well received by that community. Today's presentation is a time to come together and appreciate this memorial rather than to recommend changes. Lastly, with so much societal and political attention nationally and locally, I'm proud that this Metro Council has prioritized this important work and I'm proud that we are recognizing marginalized people buried at Lone Fur and that we are telling their stories with authenticity. And finally, we're working towards creating a place that will foster understanding and healing. With that, I'll turn it over to John Blasher, Parks and Nature Director. Do I need to turn the mic on? Or is it Ted? Great. Thank you Deputy Council President Wong and Metro Councillors for the record, John Blasher, he, him, his, Parks and Nature Director. Thank you, Councilor Wong, for kicking us off this morning as well as your leadership and engagement in this important project. We're really happy to meet with you all today and provide an update on some of the important work being done to create a memorial that will recognize marginalized people buried at Lone Fur Cemetery. Metro has invested in regional, a regional system of parks, trails, and natural areas with nature at its heart for more than 25 years. This system now includes thousands of acres of parks and natural areas as well as 14 historic cemeteries and a system of trails in between. In addition to being a place to inter and to pay respects to generations of Oregonians, Metro Cemeteries function as green spaces, appreciated by both people and wildlife. Lone Fur is Portland's second-largest arboretum as well as one of Oregon's most treasured historic places. Thanks to council leadership and direction, $4 million from the Parks and Nature Bond has gone towards prioritizing the memorial at Lone Fur, something that community has long sought to advance. Metro's Parks and Nature Bond is making clear progress and building on decades of investments in the region. And the Lone Fur Memorial Project is a great example of bringing that 2019 bond's criteria and principles to life, especially its commitment to meaningful and community engagement and ensuring that metro sites reflect community visions and priorities. Racial equity and meaningful community engagement are pillars of that 2019 Parks and Nature Bond and those values have led Metro Parks and Nature to focus on carrying out our promise of equitably honoring for the Chinese-American communities at Block 14 and in recognition of the Oregon Health Institute patients at Block 10. We're excited to share with you more today about the future of the Lone Fur Memorial today. And with that, I'm going to pass it to our project manager, Karen Vitkay.
Is this thing on?
I think so. I think all the mics are on.
Okay, great. Good morning, everyone. My name is Karen Vitkay. You can use she/her pronouns for me. I'm a planner with Parks and Nature and have the pleasure of serving as the project manager for the memorial project at Lone Fur Cemetery. Can advance to the next slide? For everyone's orientation, Lone Fur Cemetery is located in southeast Portland between southeast Stark and Morrison Streets and southeast 20th and 26th. Formerly opened in 1855, Lone Fur is the oldest continuously operating cemetery in the Portland area. It is on the National Register of Historic Places and is a sacred space where tens of thousands of people are buried. Next slide. The site of the memorial project is called Block 14 on cemetery maps and is outlined in red on this slide. At just over an acre in size, the block served as the Chinese section of the cemetery since at least 1887 and quite likely much earlier than that. Even from this aerial view, we can see that the southwest corner of the cemetery looks different than the rest of the cemetery. This is due to a long history of discrimination towards Chinese people, both by the cemetery industry and government agencies. And now to share, next slide, about the significance of this project, I'd like to turn it over to a couple of community partners, starting with Neil Lee.
Good morning. My name is Neil Lee and I identify as an American-born Chinese-American. I was born and raised in Portland. I am an architect by profession, but I have a passion for community service, particularly representing the Chinese community. I'm currently active with various committees and councils, including neighborhood associations and city agencies. Today, I'm representing the community as the president of the Chinese Consolidated Benevolent Association. The CCBA is a nonprofit organization that serves all Chinese people living in Oregon and southwest Washington. Our mission is to provide programs in support of its core values, promote and preserve Chinese culture, respect and honor our ancestors, advance educational opportunities, promote civic engagements, and advocate for social justice. The CCBA was established in Portland in 1911 to organize the local Chinese tongs and family associations to better support the Chinese community in their struggle to find housing, work, and live in America during the Chinese Exclusion Act. We provided assistance for the community to navigate the laws of the land, provide a community center for entertainment, and even acted as a courthouse to settle disputes within the Chinese community. The CCBA, in a sense, was a quasi-governmental agency and represented the Chinese community to the city of Portland and other state and federal agencies. In more recent times, the CCBA has made significant iconic contributions to the city of Portland. In 1985, the CCBA leadership led a delegation with city officials to the Republic of China to create Portland's Chinatown Gate. When erected in 1986, Portland's Chinatown Gate was the largest gate in the United States. A year later, the CCBA helped establish the Portland Kaohsiung Sister City Association, which in turn established the Portland Rose Festival Dragon Boat Races in 1989, the first traditional dragon boat race event held in the United States. Jumping back to the early 1900s, when 11% of Portland's population were made up of Chinese immigrants, one of the many projects the CCBA conducted was to assist Chinese immigrants travel to and from the United States, which included returning the bodies of the deceased back to China, a cultural protocol at the time. The CCBA provided this service throughout Oregon in the early 1900s. Of special interest is the work the CCBA conducted at the Chinese cemetery at Lone Fur. During this time, the CCBA managed the southwest corner of the cemetery, which was segregated for burials for the Chinese community. To further elaborate on the turbulent story of the Chinese cemetery at Lone Fur, I will now defer my colleague and fellow CCBA board member, Marcus Lee.
Thank you, Neil. As Neil mentioned, my name is Marcus Lee and along with a few other members of our group, Lone Fur Cemetery Foundation, have been involved with the project since the get-go and I've been asked to give a brief overview of the history of the project to this point. Block 14, within 1873 and 1927, based on research provided by the group that Metro has contracted with, saw burials of more than 2,800 Chinese over time. And a lot of that's due to the fact that there were disinterments and plots would be reused for newly deceased. In 1917, we saw the first large-scale disinterment of Chinese remains for journey back to China as per tradition. The CCBA was in charge of overseeing projects like this. They would send notices out through the Pacific Northwest, throughout Oregon, to different communities to inform them that there's going to be a shipment of remains back to China and that if they had any burials in their cemeteries that were scheduled for return, that they needed to be shipped to Portland by a specific date so they don't miss the boat. In 1928, Multnomah County takes possession of Lone Fur Cemetery. Jump forward to 1948, we see the second significant disinterment as mandated by Multnomah County. They had other plans for the property and asked that the Chinese community remove any further remains in Block 14. So typically, what would happen is the remains would be shipped back to Hong Kong. Hong Kong was kind of the transit point from overseas Chinese locations mainly back to the mainland. Unfortunately, during that period of time, the borders were closed due to a number of issues, one of which was the Japanese invasion of Hong Kong during World War II and the change in political structure in mainland China. So they closed the border. There needed to be a storage facility once the remains were dropped off in Hong Kong. That was a stopping point and then arrangements needed to be made to transfer them to their respective villages. So they needed a place to be able to hold the remains temporarily. A group called the Donghua Hospital Group created the Donghua Coffin Home where they resided. And because the borders at that time had closed, they couldn't be transferred into the mainland. And a lot of those remains are still there. And you can see this in Ivy Lynn's documentary, Come Together Home, I believe was the title of it. She actually journeyed back to Donghua Coffin Home. In Portland, the disinterments were also assisted by a gentleman by the name of George Lee Reynolds, who was very important to the community. He, his story is very, very interesting. He was the manager of Caldwell's Colonial Mortuary, which was over by northeast Sandy. The property was sold. The building's been torn down for housing, unfortunately. But he was, as an infant, he was abandoned in Chinatown. He was left on the doorstep of a Chinese family who raised him. And so he grew up with the local Chinese community here, learned the language, all the traditions, et cetera. So he knew the traditions of funerals, burials, et cetera. So he was involved in those processes during his time period. In 1953, 52 and 53, Multnomah County completes their maintenance building and the adjacent parking lot built over Block 14. 97, in 1997, we see the transfer from Multnomah County of Block 14 to Metro. However, Multnomah County, I'm sorry, they transferred Lone Fur Cemetery over to Metro, but they retain ownership of Block 14. In 2004, the county considers selling Block 14 for development. The word was that a developer was going to put up condos. This prompted a public outcry from community members, neighborhood associations, Buckman Neighborhood Association, Friends of Lone Fur. They contact CCBA to alert us to the issue. And subsequently, one of our longtime members, Rebecca Liu, who was a CCBA member at that time, she locates the two ledgers that we saw up in the slides there earlier, the disinterment ledgers. They were dated 1917 and 1928 respectively, and they were titled Chinese Cemetery Register. And in those registers and her overview and translation of some of the information, it showed that there were certain individuals to be disinterred. And those traditionally, generation probably pretty much millennial, descended down through the father's line. So typically, it was just the men who are disinterred. So we knew there were still remains. Contrast was the fact that the information was written down, obviously, all in Chinese. So we have names, locations, origins, villages that some of these individuals came from, et cetera. And this is in contrast, other records that you would see from non-Chinese entities where almost all of those disinterred Chinese descent were labeled as Chinamen and so didn't have any names associated with them. It was at this time that then-president Stephen King, Helen's husband, asked Rebecca and myself to stay involved with the project, to keep the CCBA informed. And we've, she is in California. Otherwise, it would be nice to be here today. But we, along with others, have been involved in the project since then. 2005, the county contracts with Archaeological Investigations Northwest to conduct the ground-penetrating radar tests within Block 14. Commissioner Maria Rojo de Steffé was a champion of the project, was deeply involved at the time. So these ground-penetrating investigations turned up a number of anomalies. So with some exploratory digs, discovered things like shards of pottery, pieces of Engape bottles. I hope I pronounced that correctly. They were, you know, these little, you might have seen them, brown jugs that held Chinese wine and those were very typical for in cemeteries and venerating the deceased. The tests were supposed to, the investigation was supposed to run for a couple of days. At the end of two days, they hadn't discovered any remains and Commissioner de Steffé asked for an additional day. And it's during that additional day that human remains were finally discovered under an asphalt parking area adjacent to the building. Subsequently, in 2005, the county demolishes the Morrison Building and then removes the parking surface. The county transfers the ownership of Block 14 to Metro in 2007, which regains its rightful and historic position as part of the cemetery. Metro then formed the Block 14 Work Group, referred to as the Block 14 Initiative at Lone Fur, which is composed of a number of community stakeholders, again, the CCBA, CACA, the Chinese community, the mental health community, neighborhood groups, and other interested individuals. In 2008, after a process of community engagement and with the assistance of the State of Oregon Historic Preservation Office, the Lone Fur Block 14 Memorial Master Plan was created. Metro then contracts with Lango Hansen Landscape Architects to come up with the initial memorial design. In 2011, that work group morphed to the Lone Fur Cemetery Foundation. That allowed us to become a nonprofit organization through which we could then go out and try to raise funds until we found a solid base of funding, which happened in 2019 with voter approval of the renewal of Metro's Park and Nature Bond measure, in which Metro generously allocated a portion of the funds to the Block 14 memorial, advancing the endeavor forward, much to the excitement and gratitude of our community. That brings us to the present day and I didn't want to take up a lot of time for that because I'd like to give Michael as much time as he needs for his presentation and Helen. But I do want to close with this wonderful quote from former governor and Metro Councillor Barbara Roberts. She said, "Cemeteries have so much to offer communities. We honor our ancestors by caring for their final resting place, but we also not forget their stories. They are a mirror reflection of our past and a window to our future." Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Marcus. I think we might be already over. Try to go fast here. Just wanted to say thank you to our councillor and especially councillor Dankan Hua for organizing this. So I'm Helen Ying and I'm here today to actually share a few things with you with two hats on. One of the hats is as the Lone Fur Cemetery Foundation president, it's American Citizens Alliance, and was sharing about CCBA. I'm just sitting here thinking, the founders of the Portland chapter of CACA probably also were the same folks who were involved with CCBA back then because the Portland chapter was founded in 1921. And you said CCBA started in 1911, right? So CACA Portland is part of a national organization which was founded in 1895 in San Francisco. And it was founded at the backdrop of the Chinese exclusion laws and folks were looking to, you know, find their space, right? And to seek for equal rights. And so that's what the CACA Portland mission is, is to develop leadership, serve the community, and promote civil rights. The reason why it was founded, as Marcus mentioned earlier, it really is to do very much of what Governor Roberts had shared in the quote. But at the same time, the inaugural project of the foundation is to support the construction of the Cultural Heritage and Healing Garden at Lone Fur. So today, as we said, we bring it to present day where we are. So I just want to tell, share with the councillors how exciting it is to be where we are today, knowing that in 2026, that this memorial will actually be completed. And my hope is that as we, you know, create this memorial, that we will not only pay respect and honor those who are buried there and those who haven't been buried there and have gone unnoticed, but then it is also an opportunity for us to inform how we could act to make our future better as a whole and as a people of this country. And that when it opens, my hope is that we allow visitors not only confront a painful chapter of the history, but to also imagine a future that is strengthened by illuminating the history at last. So again, I want to thank the councillors for your support because I think it was just a few years ago we came before you and advocated for your support to bring this project up to, you know, the top of projects to be completed. And so the Lone Fur Cemetery Foundation actually has an MOU with Metro. And among the many things within this MOU, as stakeholders, we want to help maintain community connections and enthusiasm during the design and construction phase of the garden and beyond. And also with coordination with Metro, we want to help and recruit and encourage community members to participate in this project throughout this process and also to help raise funds, right, for the work that is going to be continuing after this project is done. Because we know, as I mentioned many times, where we are is just the beginning, it's not the end. And so I just want to share with you that we've already submitted two grant applications to benefit the project. And so I think we may have already gone through the couple of slides that I was supposed to refer to. What you're looking at right now is actually one of the things that, oh, let's talk about this one here. So since 2022, it's one of the ways for the foundation to help, you know, get enthusiasm behind this project is that we've been holding what we call a Qingming Gathering. So Qingming is a day where it literally means to clean the tombs. And so it's a day where we, in April, where the families would come together and go to the cemetery to clean the tombs and to pay respect to the ancestors. And so we took that opportunity, having the Qingming Day and organized these gatherings at the Lone Fur Cemetery, where Block 14 is and the site of the memorial. And you can see, these are two pictures, one from this year and one from, I think it was the very first year in 2022. We also have pictures, but we can't show them all to you, you know, the other, like 2023 as well. But what we're doing is inviting different folks to come. And so as you can see, this year, what we decided to do was partner with Friends of Lone Fur. And so they brought folks who would typically come to, you all probably know that there are tours that the Friends of Lone Fur would do every Saturday. And so they brought one of the groups to come and learn about the significance of the memorial that will be built on Block 14. And then the next slide shows a gathering that the Chinese-American Citizens Alliance Portland Chapter organized, where we talked about the Chinese-American history here in Oregon as well as in the country. And this is called an 1882 Project Celebration and Educational Event. The idea behind it is 1882 is when the Exclusion Act was passed, but in 2011, we got Congress to apologize for passing those laws. And since then, we've been doing these annual events to educate the broader public about Chinese-American history as well as contributions. And this year, this past year in 2023, we actually invited Michael Yan, the lead designer for the memorial, to come and talk about the history as well as what's going to be, you know, be built here at this Block 14 in the memorial. So I'm now going to So I'm now going to give the time back as we talk more about this project.
All right. Thank you, Helen. Thanks to all of our partners for sharing a bit about community enthusiasm for the project and the history and how we're so much looking forward to the future of this project. I also wanted to touch on the hospital patients at Lone Fur. When we reinitiated this project, some thought that patients from the Oregon Hospital for the Insane were also buried at Block fourteen. Block fourteen is highlighted in blue on this slide. With recent research, however, we learned that patients were buried by the hospital at Lone Fur when they were not claimed by family members. We now know that one hundred and eighty-five patients were buried at Lone Fur, and they were buried actually at Block ten, which was considered the asylum burial ground. So that area is shaded in pink on this slide. Researchers now believe it is highly unlikely that any patients are buried at Block fourteen. Next slide. So we recognize the importance of recognizing and honoring the patients and their history as well. Mental illness is something that impacts every one of us, whether directly or indirectly. To recognize the patients, we're fabricating and installing headstones for those who do not already have grave markers. We're also working to create a space at the new memorial that is welcoming and healing for all. This includes taking a therapeutic design approach to the proposed memorial design. The team is also planning to provide interpretive information about the patients at Lone Fur. We've also publicly shared extensive research on patient burials on the Metro webpage. Next slide. Research conducted over the past two years is also informing where and how memorial improvements can physically happen on the site. During engagements with community, we heard about the importance of honoring ancestors. For many Chinese community members, this means not walking over the burial ground. Based on the history of the site, areas one and two, highlighted in yellow on this slide, may follow more conventional construction techniques, including subsurface work. The balance of the project site, labeled number three and outlined in red, this area represents the space where burials occurred. Here, we're taking a gentle approach. That includes minimizing built features in this area and building up from a layer of imported material rather than digging into the existing ground. Next slide. Over the past eighteen months, the project team has held two public open houses and two online surveys to engage the general public. We've created two videos to explain the project, including one that explains the complex history of the site and a second that explained two different design options that the design team put forward. Also, we held five focus group sessions with Chinese communities, and as Helen mentioned, we've shared the project at several presentations at local conferences. During these engagements, we heard about the importance of honoring marginalized people buried at Lone Fur. For many Chinese community members, this means being able to conduct traditional rituals. We also heard about the importance of authentically telling the history of the site, including harms done, so that we might learn from mistakes made. Next slide. Last fall, we shared two design options for the memorial with community. One concept centered around a memorial wall engraved with the names of people once buried at the site. The other was largely comprised of a grove of genko trees, a species with deep meaning in Chinese culture. The two concepts were referred to as the hill and the grove. Next slide. While both designs were well received overall, over eighty-four percent of people surveyed felt a connection to the grove concept. This input affected the preferred alternative design. To share that design, I will now turn it over to Mike Yan. Next slide.
Hi, counselors. Good morning. I'm Michael Yan. Good to see you again. I think I saw you in Washington County for Nature and Neighborhood. It's good to be back here. I am a landscape architect and a principal at Knott's Studio and grateful to be involved in this project and leading the design team. So I'm going to share a few words about our design, but also about the thought process, internal and external, that went into the design work, because I think that's super Over the, Karen shared the hill and the grove, and over the course of, I guess, the last six to eight months, we've been working on refining those into a refined concept. So there's three main things that we were considering during that time. One is community feedback, so making sure we listen to what everybody had been telling us. We started the process by talking to community for over a year before we even put pen to paper to start doing any design work. So community has been deeply involved. We listened to the Metro team feedback, so Parks and Nature Planning Team and also Operations. And then, lastly, our team really believes that we are tasked here with the serious job of repair. And so we wanted to make sure that whatever we were doing, we were working to repair this past harm. I want to add a few more words on exactly what that harm was here. I would characterize this history as the desecration of hundreds of graves in the Chinese burial ground and the forced repatriation of those remains during a time period where it was almost impossible for the Chinese community to do so. As Marcus mentioned, this occurred in the late forties, early fifties. This was the peak of the Communist Revolution. There is virtually no way that these remains were going to make it back to their families. And that was the whole point of repatriation, was so that the remains could be with family to care for them. So for the Chinese community, honoring ancestors or ancestor veneration is a heart of a cultural practice. This transcends religions. This is part of Buddhist religion, Daoist religion, Confucianism. It's a bigger cultural thing than all of those. So having the desecration of this site for the community was very impactful. In addition to that, the erasure of those individuals who are buried there has led to an ambiguous loss for the community. So there is around twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred total individuals buried at the site, one acre. That's a lot of folks. We know of maybe one person in community who can trace back an ancestor to that site. People don't know who was buried there, and therefore, they've been robbed of that ability to go and honor those ancestors. Yeah, as Helen mentioned, the Qingming Festival, it's pretty much the largest, one of the largest cultural events of the year for Chinese communities, and that literally translates to tomb sweeping, where you bring offerings and you offer words to your ancestors. So being robbed of that for all of those years is something that we really take seriously as a need to repair. So in our design, we tried to focus on reinstituting elements that would both acknowledge those who were buried there, so to bring recognition to those names, specific recognition, and then also bring elements that would allow community to practice that tradition again, because that's really what people are thirsting for, are desiring out of this project, is to, I mean, as Helen showed, people are going there now, even though it's just a grassy field, people are going there during the Qingming Festival in order to bring offerings. So we want to make sure we accommodate that. So what you're looking at here is some precedents for our design team, and I want to point out the reddish image on the second to the top right. And so this is a series of spirit tablets. So this is a traditional form of recognition for ancestors, Chinese culture, and this would normally have names, family lineage, place of birth, town, hometown, et cetera, engraved on there. And this can be represented both in homes, but also in public places. So what you're seeing here are spirit tablets for a community that's at a temple in China. So this is one of the design themes that we brought into our project as a way to recognize these individuals in a culturally sensitive manner. That wasn't what I would characterize as like more Western, which would be like Vietnam Memorial or something, just putting names on the wall. We wanted to bring that form into this design. So if we advance the slide, you'll see the site plan. So as Karen pointed out, there are a lot of constraints on this site. For one, we want to really respect the history here. This is a burial ground. We know there are existing remains there, but at the same time, it's endured all of this trauma. I also want to pause and have a sit with, or just imagine for a second, the thought process that had to occur for the county to decide to do something like this, right? How many cemeteries do you see where there's one section that was a specific racial group that's just carved out? Why did they do that, right? It's not necessarily the easiest thing for them to do. Part of the reason why they did that, I mean, well, one, it's racist, right? Two, Chinese were experiencing Chinese exclusion, and they're also experiencing all types of other forms of restrictions, like alien land laws. They could not own land, and they also couldn't enter into contractual agreements. And so they didn't have a formal deeded right to this property, and that's something that in the public record is very clear, the county knew that, and they could take advantage of that. So anyway, back to the design. We focused most of the built elements on the west side of the site, which wasn't historically part of the burial ground, and that's where you'll see a memorial pavilion that is created out of the spirit tablets that I show you, and then a square set of interpretive panels that surrounds that and protects that space. As you know, we're on the corner of Twentieth and Morrison, this is a high-traffic area. We want to create at least a little bit of protection from that traffic while also making sure that we're optimizing things that are important to community and to Metro, which specifically is transparency, and so for people to be able to see through the site and to also have some openness. So if we forward to, well, actually, sorry, let's leave it in here for one second. I want to point out that we've retained the grove over the burial ground, and what we heard really strongly from community is that this represented a sense of hope, so planting it with culturally significant trees was important. People also were interested in having a white flowering plant at the time of the Qingming Festival, which is in April. So we've intermixed the genko grove with ulan magnolia, which is another culturally significant plant for Chinese that have really beautiful white flower in April. And then on the far east side is the site of the historic altar, and so there is some ongoing work on that, but basically what we are going to be doing in that space is just recognizing the history and marking that history on the landscape. It's that photo that you saw previously of a full roasted pig being brought to the altar. And so we don't want to recreate that, but we want to recognize it and demarcate. And then the number seven here tucked into the grove is another element important to Chinese culture, which is a traditional shrine honoring the god of the land or the Tutong. And so this is something that comes as part of the practice for Chinese burial and recognition is that you honor the god of the land, and then you honor your ancestor in sequence. And I want to point out that burning incense in these locations is really, really important to community. It's the vehicle by which the offerings are transmitted to the spirit realm. And so if you go to Chinese temples, there's huge incense holders everywhere. So we have been trying to work out a way to make sure that people can practice that here in the space. So if we advance the slide, you'll see a view looking into the entrance of the spirit tablet pavilion. We heard strongly from community, we want this to feel Chinese, we want there to be more Chinese elements. And so we've incorporated a more traditional gate structure with the Dwalang, which is basically a two-part poem based on the name of the site. And so the naming is something that we're still talking through with community, but we want to make sure that we're having kind of that more recognizable traditional element as you walk in. And this is also intended to feel like a process of discovery, and so there's screening elements mixed with some solid elements here where you can see through, you can see into the spirit pavilion, but you get all of these nested views. So this whole process has been an uncovering process, and so we wanted the design to feel like that. So if we advance the slide, then you'll see the view from inside the memorial pavilion. And so there are a little under three thousand tablets in this pavilion. One of the big desires, again, as I mentioned, from both Metro and community was to create transparency. This is also very challenging because we have a lot of names here, we have a lot of recognition, which take up space. And so we have come up with a method of basically using the tablets to create a screening element so that you can see through it, but we still have an individual spirit tablet with, on each one of those metal pieces is engraved the traditional characters from the burial ledgers that Marcus and Helen and Neil presented. And so we're documenting, we're putting that back into public space. And in the center is an altar where people can bring offerings, and then above it is an oculus or a window. And in Chinese culture, this would be a way for spirits that have been suffering here to transcend. And so if we move to the next slide, this is looking back, so we are using native meadow plantings in the understory and gesture, recognizing Chinese community's role in the colonial project and the repair to indigenous communities. So at the site, there was native savanna, Douglas fir savanna here. And so the plantings in the understory, I think, should hearken back to that, but also we'll repair the soil, which was, again, a maintenance building and paved from edge to edge. I also want to point out Metro is very good at maintaining native landscapes, there's a lot of acreage in the metro system, so we want to make sure that this is something that people are comfortable with maintaining. And then on the walls is the interpretive, so there's adequate space for the interpretive, and that's one of the things we're working on this next phase. And I think the last slide, okay, yeah, and then I'll just hand it back to Karen.
Yeah, I know we're running along on time. I'll just quickly share, we recently closed a public input survey sharing these designs, and over seventy-five percent of respondents said that they felt connected to this design, and this was in a survey where only about thirty percent of those self-identifying identified as Asian-American. And when we look at the results or responses from Asian-American community members, ninety-six percent of people responded that they felt connected to the design. So we do feel overwhelming support for the current direction of the design. Once we more fully digest this input from community, the design team will initiate the design engineering phase, so that's going through thirty, sixty, ninety percent, and we are working towards then going out to construction and having that construction completed by the end of two thousand and twenty-six. Thank you for your time and your support of this very important project, and happy to open it up for any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you to the community members and staff. It's been such a meaningful process, and it's been an honor to work and learn aside beside you all. I do have a question, since we're here to, in many ways, celebrate A N H P I Heritage Month, can if you speak to kind of like what those twenty-eight hundred people that were buried at the cemetery, what were their, like, jobs, like, what kind of contributions were they making to kind of the growth and development of Portland at that time?
Yeah. Pretty happy to.
So we don't know actually what each of them did, right, Counselor Huang? But I do remember, I did put together a talk. It's called, you know, Untold Stories of the Chinese Americans in Oregon. And what we know, when I was doing my study to prepare for that talk, is that actually the Chinese, the eleven percent, right, that Neil mentioned earlier, they helped to build our city, our state, our country. You know, they did a lot of the work that people didn't want to do. I just want to give you one example, I don't know if that individual would have been buried at Lone Fur, but I know that when I went to the town Echo, I don't know if you guys know where it is, but it's near Peloton, it's like twenty minutes away. And there, I talked with one of the city managers, she's also the librarian, she's also, I think, the mayor of the city, but she was showing me a picture that, so the person who founded Echo, he named the town after his daughter. That's why the town is named Echo. But this founder of the town Echo, he actually had a chef that was a Chinese, and he had a picture of this chef, and that is in the archive in the city manager's office. And so I'm just thinking, you know, one of the things that they did was they, you know, they were chefs, and we also know that there's a Chinese garden where they met the metropolitan, the Monoma, I'm sorry, the Mac, not the Met, the Mac, is where that is located. the Monoma, I'm sorry, the MAC, not the Met, the MAC, is where that is located, that's where the Chinese had garden. And you know how we talk about farm to table? What they literally did, they, they took vegetables and they carried it with a, like a, you know, a stick on their shoulders, and they went door to door to peddle their, their vegetables. So that's, you know, we also, they farmed, right? And we also know that in Astoria, a lot of the cannery work, you know, where the Chinese were involved in that, and also, I don't know if you guys have been to Astoria, the Garden of Surging Waves, it was a gift that the city council in Astoria gave to itself for the 200th anniversary celebration. And the Garden of Surging Waves is actually designed by one of our friends, Suen Ho. If you haven't had a chance to visit it, I highly encourage you to do so, because there you can learn a lot more about the Chinese American history. There's actually a historical timeline that's carved into the pavement there. And what we learned from the city counselor who was there during the unveiling of that garden, we got to know him a little bit, and he was telling us, you know, about what he knows, and we had, he cooked razor clams for us, actually. He went out and got razor clams that morning, and he owns an Italian restaurant there. He made us razor clams, and he sat down and he says, I was telling him about, I'm so interested in about really unearthing and learning more about Chinese American history in Oregon, and he says, I'm going to show you something that you're going to really be intrigued about, Helen. So he drove us to the mouth of the Columbia, and we, I don't know if you all know this, but at one point, if you leave to go out into the ocean, you know, the Pacific, and if you, because Columbia flows in the Pacific, if you don't come back, by a certain time of the day, you don't get, you don't get to come back. Basically, you're going to just be die at, you're going to die at sea. And so what they did was they built these, all of a sudden, the title of that.
Jetty.
The jetty, right? They built these jetties to help to make it safer for sea voyage, right? And he says, Helen, this, this jetty was built by Chinese, and many of them actually lost their lives building the jetty. I mean, it was just like such a touching moment for me to just know, when you ask, you know, what did the Chinese do? Many of them actually gave their lives to this country. We know about the railroad construction, and even though, you know, they may, the folks may not have worked on a transcon into a railroad, but I know when I went to Echo, they had a building, it's called the China House, because at that time, when they were building railroads across Oregon, you know, men had, had to have a place to sleep, right? So they, they, they would have places they, they called the White House, those are for the white folks, and then they have places to call the China House. That's where the Chinese have to, you know, cook and, and do whatever they need to do under shelter. And so, so we know the Chinese also worked under the railroads here in Oregon. So those are just some examples of what I, but I also want to mention, along my research, we also found that they owned businesses, right? And so it ranges from doing work that nobody wanted to do all the way up to owning businesses.
Thank you for sharing that history.
If you don't mind, I'd like to add one quick thing. If you've ever eaten a bing cherry, know that the bing cherry was invented by a Chinese immigrant, Ah Bing. And so just another contribution of the Chinese community to the United States.
Thank you. Okay, colleagues, any comments, thoughts? Counselor Simpson.
Thank you, Deputy President Wong. Thank you for your presentation. I really want to uplift the community value in all of this, and also I want to speak to what you spoke to earlier, and that is calling it out the way it is. A lot of bad things happened during that time period with the leadership, you know, in charge of government and all kinds of things. The design, though, is beautiful. I really appreciate the elements and the thoughtfulness, especially around how we can see our ancestors, because that's something I personally believe too, is we have to honor our ancestors, because if you can't respect the dead, then you don't respect the living. And so, you know, this is a project long overdue, long overdue, but I'm super supportive of it, and I'm glad that we are at this point as an agency, but also in the face of the world, we can say we're doing something and we're doing the right thing for our community. So my hat's off to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Nolan.
Mr. Chair, first of all, to you for pushing forward to make sure that this happened, and it happened now and not 10 years from now, because Metro's been dancing up to the edge of this for too long. Thank you. And to the history that you've shared, I must tell you, I am struggling to contain my emotions. The pain, and at the same time, the tenderness that you've described of the community and the vigilance of the community, and the elegance of the design that brings all of that out is overwhelming, and I am so glad to be part of it. I am looking forward to celebrating with you when this opens, and it is the beginning, Helen. It's not the end, it's the beginning of something magical. Thank you.
Counselor Lewis.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Deputy Council President, for the opportunity to comment. My thoughts are that this is an absolutely remarkable moment, because our council is here with community and with staff that have been working really hard through a lot, not only a lot of history of people and of communities, but also history of institutions, which so often get shoved under the rug. And across this region, there are other institutions that have parallel and shared history that are not doing this work, and I hope that from the Metro perspective, we can help model and lend resource so that those institutions can rise. It's not only a story of Monoma County and of Metro, it's also a story of the city of Milwaukee, the city of Oregon, city of Clackamas County, places I represent, not to mention other parts of this region. So this is a regional story. I hope this is a place of not only local community healing, but also for across the region. So really nice work to get us to this point. I look forward to continuing to be able to lift up the work of the community and the staff who are holding all of this so carefully. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you again for all your work. It's been an honor to work beside you, and we're looking forward to the groundbreaking. Thank you.
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as we transition to the next item, I'd so like to express our appreciations to Anne, Victor, and Beth, who got the treats that were downstairs this morning. The baked goods were from Maison, the coffee, coffee was from Cafe, and snacks from across Asia from Fubon, so thank you for setting that up. Okay, well, we'll move on to our next item, which is the